Hello everyone, this is Fantastic Worlds, welcome back to Love Well, let's head to this place so time has passed, Lovecraft Country and Dreams in the Witch House, in which we put ourselves into the shoes of an actual Lovecraftian protagonist Walter Gilman in his attempt not to have his soul devoured, get eaten by a wit by Nahhotep, not be eaten by a giant rat thing, or a giant for a rat, small for people, and of course to pass our exams, which is of course is far more important than cosmic horror going on around us, which probably is the only way he can stay alive in Lovecraftian stuff. Anyway, so first things first, we need to deal with our bulb. You remember to kill the damn thing off. Alright, let's talk. Coming? What is it now? Okay, the lightbulb. Do you have the new lightbulb for my room yet? Yes, yes, I have it now. I'll go get it. There, you are such a fit young man, so you can replace it yourself, right? Alright, I'll change it myself then. Okay, it's noon, do we do an odd job and then study with a light? Because we have the extra food. Why not? Can always use some more cash. You still have work around the house. Let's see. Ah, there's a big pile of wood that needs chopping. Are you sure you want to do this right now? It's raining, you'll get drenched. I do have a raincoat. Chop the firewood. I could chop the firewood. A little rain never hurt nobody. Well, many people die from exposure, Walter. Very well. You start chat, we've done this before. Alright, so it's evening. The firewood is now chopped. Very well. Here's your payment. Three dollars for a day's work. Thanks. Alright, so we're up to six bucks. Great. Alright, so also it's Sunday. So tomorrow we should be getting our, alright, change the lightbulb. That should do it. Oh, they automate the process now. Great. Don't think you'd do that stupid thing. Good, good on the developer. Okay, the rat hole has been devoured. Oh gods, let's go see if Walter has... Ah, Walter, what's his name? Joe. John Lembowski has a piece of wood or not? Uh, this is my life. So open. Alright, hi Walter, what's up? Hey Joe. Yes? Ask for a plank. Well, first, think about my room. I'll tell you the story sometime, but not right now. Is there any of the room vacant? I suggest you switch to that. I see. Oh, I had the old man voice for him, didn't I? Ask for a plank. Do you happen to have a piece of wood I could take? Let me see. Oh yes, um, yes, I think I saw a plank lying around here you could use. Check the shelves, I think I saw it there. Oh god, we're doing this again. Alright, cool. Sure, alright, fine. Take these shelves. Nothing here. Nothing here. Um, rug? Let's see, there's something under the rug. Let me accept dust. Oh well, since you are, okay, let's get the chair. Awesome, put that over this side. No, no, how do you? Never mind. Okay, do the cabinet over here. I guess this is the thing we're gonna be doing, going back and forth with the chair. Nothing here I want to take. Oh gods, alright, fine. Apparently it is, doesn't work. Make me do all of this work for this stuff. I found the plank for the rat hole. It's all, it's all yours, sonny. Thanks. Alright, cool, chair staying there dude. Clean your room. Do you read, Walter? Alright, let's get busy. Alright, I've got an exam tomorrow if I recall. Monday, lecture, yep. No, not exam, lecture. Okay, there we go. Alright, let's, let's do this. Let's seal this hole. Ah gods, I'm probably, yeah, it's night. I kinda wish we had it. Can we actually buy a watch? Oh no, the music. Okay, chains and such. I could hear them scurrying, the partitions, I'm hungry. Great. I can afford food now. I hit the spot, I'm full. Alright, so what the question is? Yeah, let's sleep now and study at the library later, okay? We won't use up our precious, um, lightbulb. Oh, thank god. Alright, cool. Eight hours passed. I slept well, the rat, oh my god, not again. I have a lecture today, thank you. Okay, game saved, which is good. So we should go do the lecture first. Also, since it's Monday, let's stop by and grab our mail. Okay, fourteen dollars in the envelope. Okay, excellent. So we're at twenty bucks. Oh god, I feel rich now. Anyways, let's go. To the lecture hall. Okay, front door. Right, that's Allison, isn't it? Alright, cool. Yep, student, uh, well, I was hoping you would say yes. Excuse me. Yes? Are you Allison Whitman, the one who had lost her student card? Yes, have you found it? No, I haven't found it yet. Drat, I really need the card for the coming exams. I'd hate to have to buy a new one. Ask about the day Allison lost the card. Do you have any idea where the card might be? I'm sure it's somewhere here at the university. What were you doing on the day you lost the card? I returned some books to the library in the morning. After that, I attended a lecture. What next? Yes, I went to the archives to search materials for my essay. I was already getting dark when I noticed I had lost the card. The university was closing and I had to leave the building. And that's all? You pretty much, yes. Ask about the books. What were the names of the books you returned to the library on the day you lost the card? The first was a book called The Book of Tea. The second was The Yellow Wallpaper. Hey, that's an actual story. I see. It's a cosmic horror feminist story from the late nineteenth century, actually. Um, ask about the essay materials in the records room. You said you were searching for research materials in the university archives. Yes, that's correct. What materials were you looking for? Let me think. Yes, I remember now. It was the travel correspondence of Dr. Waldron. I see. Goodbye. Will you help me find the card? Agree to help. Yes, yes, I'll help you. I think it's a good chance to find the card if you follow the clues. That's very nice of you. Alright, I'll get back to it. I think a proper introduction is in order. Allison Whitman. Walter Gilman. Oh my god. I haven't met you yet, so it's nice to meet a friendly face. Are you a freshman or? Yes, I just started here. Me too. If you ever need a study partner, let me know. We might be able to help each other. Sure, I'll keep that in mind. Alright, hang on one second. Did we just fucking break time and space and have a Lovecraftian protagonist touch a woman? Seriously though, I mean, Lovecraft was, he was married, his wife apparently said he was perfectly adequate as a lover, that's literally all as she said in her correspondence we have, which is kinda creepy if you think about it. But, um, yeah, most of them would just been aesthetics who fainted the, fainted the concept of, uh, of trouble. So they're not really relationship material. But, um, yeah. Let's see what we'll go with this. Anyways. I think, alright, so let's check the time. It's morning still, so let's dump, drive into the door, let's get the, the correspondence of Dr. Waldron. Oh, for crying out loud. That's black out here, I need more light. Alright, cool, that's a little weird. We the first ones here? I mean, dude, did you like not? Alright, so if I recall properly, that's our archives. Okay, so we're looking for Dr. Waldron. University records, publication, faculty and personal archives. So if he's a doctor here at the university, he'll be under personal archives. Early faculty minutes, seventeen seventy-five to eighteen oh six, that's how old this place is. Promotion and review, records of office of faculty affairs, eighteen forty-two to nineteen oh eight, course, that already is Dr. Waldron, just skipping ahead there. Forty-one point six, room two. Alright, I top that shelf too. Probably should coordinate these things, but fourteen, fourteen, fourteen point six. His books is full of files, it will take some time to go through them. Examine the papers. Okay. There are documents that Allison was examining. I'm not really interested in the papers though. Alright, so yeah, let's go through. Maybe her, ah, what do we have here? I thought it would be the last place she was, so it would be cool. Creepy, but you know. Alright, so let's get our dollars, shall we? God, we're gonna have twenty-one dollars, we're gonna be rich. What are we gonna do with it all? Am I supposed to just talk to the good doctor while we're here? Alright, Allison, I've saved your bacon. Hello again. Hi Walter. I'm going more manly at this point. Any luck finding my student card? Return Allison's card. Now, I'm thinking actually there's a possibility we could try to have used it to doctor up our own card, then try to save the money by cutting out a piece of her face, but her name is not Allison. Think it would be kind of difficult. Eh, let's do the paragon. Return Allison's student card. I have it right here. Look at that. Oh, thank you so much. I have almost given up hope. I promised a reward for finding the card. Here's a dollar for your efforts. Yay, we're rich. Thanks. Yes, yes, he's gonna do the whole thing. Ask about studying together. You said that you could use a study partner. That's right. Studying alone can get boring after a while. Do you have organic chemistry too? I do. Where would you like to study together? Oh my god, we're gonna do it. We're gonna have a Lovecraft, we're gonna break reality and have a Lovecraftian protagonist actually have a date. Yes, I'm hoping a study partner might help my grades. Great. I'm busy during the week, we could do it during the weekend, meet during next weekend. It's Saturday, alright? Yes, yes, I think so. Where shall we meet? Let's meet in the coffeehouse, okay? They have a free refill of coffee. About midday, okay? Root works for me. Great. Then go to the coffeehouse the next Saturday. Alright then, I'll mark the date down. We have lost our incel energy. What's up? I'm just checking my course schedule, I should write it down. I suggest you do that. Goodbye. Bye. Alright, let's do the lecture, actually. Question is... Oh whoops, sorry, it's still morning. I think we can actually go talk to the good doctor. See if you've got anything new to say. Gubby, the door is open. Ah, Walter, not yet devoured yet. Tell me, talk about your theory, ask about the special, okay, special collection. I'd like to ask you about the special collection. Sure, what you have in mind? Um, wishing to examine. I'd like to examine the special collection. And why would you want to do that? My research and my theory requires more resource material. Access to the special collection would be most helpful. Can I take a look at our theorem? Sure, we've actually progressed it, which is what I wanted to see him to do. Let's see what we have here. A sacred geometry, the occult solution by Walter Gilman. You've got my attention. Okay. Excuse me, how does it look? Have you come enough time to form opinion? Alright, I think I have a grasp on your current status with your theory. Hmm, you've made some progress, but you really aren't need the special collections at this stage. I'm sure you'll find interesting books to read in the regular collections. When the theory has reached a further stage, we'll discuss this more. I guess, I guess so, lost the manliness. About your theory, about my theory, yes. Uh, change the topic. And we'll leave. Okay, so we need to progress, which, you know, is gonna take more time, obviously. Hang on one second. Oh, I gotta, I gotta remember to do this when I'm just talking. But yeah, the thing is, is that we need to progress that, we need to do research, we need to study. Oh gods, the books, we should probably study the books while we're here. As soon as we're done with the damn lecture. That's what we actually came here for, we should probably do that. Thus, you are changed chemistry from a science of observation to a science of measurement. Is that literally all you're gonna tell me? Observation and measurement, basically you measure things like temperature, um, change in composition, weight, etc. Before that, people were just kinda winging it. Okay, so... Actually, it'd probably be better if I tried to do it this way. Alright, so... Ah, I hope that freeze, doesn't freeze time though. Ah! Anyways, so the thing is, we're here, I've got the book, I could probably just do some research up here without burning off my precious, uh, lightbulb. And, um, after that wander off and buy some more food. Alright, I think this is what we'll do. Getting kind of routine going here. My god, we actually have a date. Where should I start? Oh right, I gotta select... Right, make sure this is the organic chemistry one. Yeah, okay. Armage's leaves, kilometer is a device to measure the heat of a chemical reaction in heat capacity, which I do actually know. I had to take a lot of organic chemistry. I finished the book, but there's still, I finished the book, but there's still a lot to learn. Yeah, we've, we've been emasculated unfortunately by Doctor, by Doctor Armage. I have been faster progress than subsequent readings. So I'm supposed to reread this damn thing? Oh my god. Alright, how long can we stay here and research? Oh wait, evening, we need to go out and, um... And, uh, we need to go out and we need to buy food, so we should probably go to the market. See if there's anything else that we need. That's where, you know, stinking rich at the moment. Whoops. Walter, isn't this a surprise? Hello, Allison. Next small talk. How's it going? Good. I had to take care of a few things downtown, heading home soon. Uh, hmm, would you like to? Yes, spit it out. Do you want to do something together? I have some free time. You have a cup of coffee? That sounds great, but I don't have any money with me. Oh, offer to pay for Allison's coffee. Alright. Let's do this shit. Oh, I could buy you a cup of coffee. Really? Sure, no problem. Alright, how nice of you. Let's get going then. Oh no, we have done the absolute worst thing for studying. We have, we have... We have... A relationship, which is gonna destroy our, uh, life and studies, I'm sure. I'm not bitter at all. Look, soup is two dollars. Talk about studies. How, how are your study, how are your studies going? Pretty well. When I'm motivated, it's easy. I guess the tru, I guess the trick is how to be motivated. Exactly. Right now, I'm struggling with the German philosophers. Oh god, that's a depressing read, I play that much. The only worst ones in Germans are Russians. Those stuffy old texts are like a sleeping medicine to me. Go with the Greeks, they're more fun. I'll have to check them out next time I have trouble sleeping. Yeah. Sanity plus five. Well, this was nice, but I need to get going. See you around. Oh my god, we had a date. We had a... I feel like we're breaking the laws of reality here. I mean, Lovecraftian, um, our, Lovecraftian protagonists are not supposed to have functional lives. Like, you know, Kazaya is stalking him at this moment. Which, alright, I mentioned the Dreams in the Witch House rock opera, but there is a music video where one of the songs called "No Turning Back" in which Kazaya Mason, the singer playing Kazaya Mason, seduces Walter Gilman and it's... No, literally seduces, not just with the knowledge, and it's... A bit mind bending on that one, um... Lovecraft is evolving and I'm not sure the world is ready for it. Check out the video, it's online, it's online. No turning back. What can I do for you today? Alright, cool, let's see what we have. We could buy food. Plank, alright, anything else? Glue, razor blades, I don't think, we are definitely not taking up smoking. Oh kid, I'll get you someday. No, time has passed, so, but, let's go, quick. Don't bite me, you bastards. Oh well, the thing is, the health thing regenerates pretty quickly, so... Let's go home, I guess. A long day. We had a date. Still wrapping my mind around it. Alright then, head upstairs. Seriously, we're not dealing with that right now. Okay, so it's currently night, we are tired, so we're gonna do the most logical thing. Sleep. Okay, what's, I slept well, I'm hungry. No problem. Seater, oh, we wouldn't be able to buy it anyways. Alright, wait, duh, wouldn't it be able, we just bought it anyways, I'm trying to say, okay. So the question is, do we stay here or go to the university to study? Now, going to the university to study has the advantage of it's not chewing up, uh, lightbulb, we're not chewing anything here. Also, might be chances of random encounters if we go out again. I believe they have a dating scenario for this game. It's... But yeah, thing is, the university is a nicer place, um, we can get, uh, quite a bit there, and we can also take out the other book. Remember, we've got, I believe we've got Malacoros Melcurium, we've got, um, Murray's Witch Cult one-two in anthropology, um... Also, he recommended another one, which I do not recall, but I'll go back on my footage if absolutely necessary, but, let's do it. Let's have a social life. Oh my god, we're hurting the reality at this point. Okay, so it's dawn. Let's over to the university. Might be too soon. Get there, you know, early word catches the, uh, horrifying truth of reality. So yeah, let's, uh, come to the library rat like I did in real life. Okay, cool, okay. Hey, oh, I can use these too. Right, okay, so we're definitely gonna do Elements Academy three while we're here. And Elements of Substance, yeah, we were cycling around again. Okay, so exams are bound plus eight, exams are at four point eight, so essentially it is now noon. So we could do... Oh, hang on, let's get this guy. We could do, let's do the Maleficarium and then work on the research paper. Oh my god, this is so, so, um... Actually, I should have done the other book, damn it. Oh, forgot about it. Cult plus three, okay. So, it's now dusk. Which means we can, might be able to get an hour or two in as well, so, also we're wet, how do we get wet? Still wet? Seriously? Alright, cool. Apparently we're still feeling a little under the weather, but yeah. Okay, so... I should have grabbed Murray into that, like, completely slipped my mind where we had the book in my hand, but... So we'll do one more round of chemistry. Thus, be aggressive into four groups, elastic, non-metals, metals and earths. Okay, it's gonna be one of the exams questions we have to know. University is closing for the day. Alright, cool. It is now night, we should probably be leaving. We've done the entire thing, not going to the gangway this time of night. Alright, coffeehouse, are we, are we actually gonna freaking tempt fate? There's nothing we need in the garbage, which, let's have some self-respect, shall we? Okay, so, question is, are we gonna stay wet? Do I have to, um... You know, we can afford extra firewood. Let's see if this helps. Fuel for the fire. Alright, so... Let's get that done. Alright, nice and cheery. Might be able to do a, yep, dry, that's what I thought, bruised, health minus one. Let's get that plank on, shall we? Ah, god, let's seal the hole. Now, according to, um, lore, as it were, the rat things are actually people volunteers, um, which is a little weird, mind you, but it's doable, so let's, um, just turn in for the night. Now, I would never actually in real life turn in when the fire was still going. I basically make sure to bang the ashes, there's absolutely no chance of catching, this is wooden house. Now, I'm betting she doesn't flush out these, uh, these, uh, chimneys properly either. Okay. Do do do, dun 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 dun. Sorry, Doctor Who theme. Okay, so apparently we're doing some dice rolling. Cool, twenty-sider. Um... Alt. What was in that stuff you ate? I have no idea what we're doing. I didn't get much sleep, I had restless dreams. I plunged to the warring twilight abyss, then the dream changed. It's nothing like I've seen before. It's hard to describe, an utterly alien world, its own laws of physics. Sanity minus four, okay, so things are happening. She basically took us on a, on a trip. But, um, or we had a trip, or we tripped, um, however you wanna look at it. But, currently we have to consider what we're gonna be doing next. Are we gonna be out wandering? Mount morning. Wandering through the university and doing that again, this time we'll actually research Murray's book, okay? So we'll do that, we'll shelve it and then be done with it. Then we're going to, oh yeah, we also make sure we've got this, Monday, twenty-third session, next Saturday, the coffeehouse around midday. Okay, so... But, we have nothing to do until Saturday, basically. So which means we can just do basic research. We'll be doing, we don't need to do any odd jobs since we've got the cash for it. I'll check the mailbox just in case, you know, maybe because I had something mailed here for herself. Um, yeah, let's, uh, dig it up. Do our thing. Kinda wish they'd actually spring for a rail, for, for a raincoat. Um, skin for Walter, wouldn't have taken that much. But yeah, let's just, you know, check over to the place, you know, our second home, as it were. Our first home sucks. Alright, let's go upstairs. First things first, let's go find Murray in Anthropology. No, no, I didn't mean that, sorry. Dude, uh... Uh, sorry, uh, that was a misclick. Must think we're kinda weird. Hi, bye. Hey, Murray's in Anthropology, which I believe is. Oh, hi Allison. Hello again. Hi Walter. Chit chat. What are you up to? I'm just inspecting the miniature. They're trying to figure out the layout of the campus, it's like five buildings. I see. Well, it's a good thing she's cute. Murray, 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 Murray. Ah, there it is, Witch Cult, let's go. Not that way. Alright, so... Okay, that was maybe one more. Witch Cult in Western Europe. Oh god. The library was my sanctuary in college, I just went there, studied the hell and nobody, nobody bothered me. It was, it was heaven. Okay. Cult plus three, excellent. What we're gonna do now is we're gonna take this. We're gonna work on it more. The enlightenment provided the concept of the clockwork universe, where the world was seen as a perfect machine, correct? The knowledge of the old is ridiculed and banned. However, as the twentieth century advances, we are learning the universe is stranger than we ever imagined it to be. Oh yeah, quantum can... Quantum computing right now is like possibly cracking reality, it's a thing. As new scientific discoveries are made, we may ourselves drifting further away from a universal theory. There's chaos we cannot understand. The clockwork is skipping time, or time is just simply an illusion that our mind creates. Alright, I'm very tired. Theory plus five, what's our theory? Sanity lower? Oh yeah, probably. Okay, at least the, at least, cult, where's the, okay, where is this? Eleven or twenty-five? It's getting more and more professional. Okay, so eleven twenty-five probably is going to, we have to complete that before we can do anything else, we need to, we need to go home. Alright, let's, um... Oh, right, sorry, almost walked out with that one. Excuse me, how can I help you? Return book. I'd like to return this book. Thank you. Have a good day, sir. Alright, so we... Very tired, bruised. Alright, let's, um, let's whip it. That was Wednesday, guys. Absolutely, you know, boring. But, that's, you want, you actually want boring. Okay, evening would allow us to actually go to the coffeehouse and get a meal, or... Cause I, yeah, I, yeah, it's actually still, oh, cause, gods, look, I'm trying to do my shopping in peace, you can look for skincare elsewhere. Purchase items, alright, so food. Alright, exit. Come back soon. Alright, alright. I could go to a concert for extra sanity, but we've got Allison, should be fine. See, I didn't, alright, so, purchase items. Cold medicine doubles the healing effect of rest and halves the sickness growth speed. Vaccine earplugs, sleeping pills, are all negative side effects, noise, distractions in sleepings, five doses. Pain reliever, same effects of physical injury, resting, sleeping or resting, ooh. Whoops, I didn't actually mean to hit that. You'll numb the pain quickly and safely with our tested pain reliever, the element, great. I know it, scratch. An excellent choice, this is a must product if you can catch that nasty spring flu. And sleeping pills, alright. Now, your tested sleeping pills will send you quickly off to dreamland and banish the torments of insomnia. That is why we're having an issue. We'll have to do some wick work around the house tomorrow, I'm thinking. Then we can possibly just study at home. Yeah, if we go to the university, we're gonna be studying the books, we can't have, but, we're not gonna be late evening, let's, let's go upstairs. That rat hole has been devoured. Oh my god. Probably we can't talk to Joe either. It's open. Hi Walter, what's up? Alright, let's do it. Hey Joe. Yes? Plank, do happen to have a piece of wood I could take? Let's see, see. I should keep one in reserve, I know they're giving me right now. Ask in a day or two. Alright, okay, exit. Damn it, see you around, Walter. Yes, he's gonna have a manly voice around Allison, otherwise his usual lot voice. Okay, so... The element. Alright, so cold medicine, sleeping pills. These sleeping pills guarantee a good night's sleep regardless of conditions. There's ten doses left, so what I can do... Hope the pills work. Don't take too many at once, alright dude? Also, we're, we're dry, we're very tired and bruised, so... Actually, cancel. Let's check out what the, um, cold medicine does. Cold medicine shortened the sickness significantly, there's four doses left. Okay, sickness we don't have. Not gonna help with the rat bites. Earplugs and sleeping pills. Well, that sucks. What a horrible dream. It looked like the rat had a tiny human face, or was it a dream? I mean, it was only half awake with my dream that mixed up with reality. I'm assuming with those rats, they get my imagination working overtime. I'm hungry. Great. On, alright, we're still not sleeping. Alright, there's literally nothing I can do with this level of tiredness, um... What's to do? Glentures, injuries, so... We're still bruised, we still haven't healed from that yet, we still haven't slept worth a damn, so... And it's dawn. And it's dawn. That's what we're gonna have to do. Let's take off. Go buy a plank. And we'll come back and do some work around the house, I guess. Look, get your damn pets out of my room, woman. That's right, I'm in the nineteen twenties. I can be sexist. Thirties, sorry. Oh, my god, now you're out of boards too. I hate all of you. We're only gonna change out the, um, boards when we have that. What is our sanity at? It's not great. Alright, first things first, we're running lower on money than I like. Let's run back to the house and see if we can get a, uh, quick job in the rain, damn it. Now we've got firewood. Oh, whoa, whoa, grab the paper. I'm kind of being a. Arkham advertizer, Thursday, March ninth to eighteenth. Interesting movie in the theater today. Tickets, one dollar. That would help. Oh, wait, we have, we have a movie tuning to us. Let's get up here. Let's put the damn board in. Let's seal this hole. Alright, now we can actually do some sleeping. We've been during the day, I've been studying in the night. I'm feeling a bit off. The earplugs are generally, I need to buy a napkin. What are we wrong? What's wrong now? Spatiated rested, decay, warm, dry, not sick, feeling a bit off. Alright, so we, we can work with this. So one of the things we can do is we could think about. Alright, so we managed to get the sleep going. It's too late to do any of the work around the house, so I guess we just can do some studying while we have sunlight over here. Let's get the, um, elements of chemistry done next. It is too more time sensitive. Love is there recognized and named oxygen and hydrogen. Excellent. Exams are now plus eight. Exams are currently six point four. Great. Now, the question is, is currently late evening, we are rested? We should consider studying through the night. Which might definitely just study the occult stuff, though. Alright, so what we're gonna do is we're going to do the malacris malleus malaphicarium, whammer of the witches, and then see what happens. Keep it down, Kazaya. Oh, god, so there's this rat scurrying around distracting my studies. I'm hungry. Okay, so did we not actually go up in, in a cult? I didn't look like it. So we've got this issue. We should not be studying here. Tasty, I'm full. It's now night. We're currently tired, so we could do is just take a quick nap. Remember, move it on to Friday. We need ear, earplugs. That's the problem is we're out of earplugs. I should need to order them. I like this look. That thought's kept me awake. The rat hole was, oh, my gods. You people are messing with me. Pain reliever. I might have to take some pain reliever and do some research. In the meantime, we're low on cash. We'll need to get those earplugs. Kazaya's a noisy neighbor. What is it now? Wait, whoa, whoa, leave. Wait, goodbye. Let me make sure I have the light off. Gods, I'm getting bad with that. Yeah, I, I messed up. No, actually I had it off. This is good. Alright, just wanted to make sure on that one. Alright, let's go. Coming. What is it now? Odd jobs. Let's see. Yard can use in raking. Grain gutters are clogged, need use cleaning. So what shall it be? Let's do the yard. Very well. Alright, so blah, blah, blah. Time by fl- oh, time goes by aggressively, but it's still eight hours. Okay. Yes, I rake the yard. Very well. Here's your payment, three dollars for a day's work. Thank you. Now, the question is, can we still hit the movie? I would like that. Sanity's a bit low. Might be too late, but it is a movie theater. It might be open. Alright. Oh, the movie theater. Ah, looks like instead, actually, no, we can't. And whoa, 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 whoa. It's still evening and not late evening. Might be able to get those earplugs if we're quick about it. Yes. Alright, no, 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 not that place. Uh, no, uh, purchase items. Exit. Okay, so we do not have, they don't have a plank. I'll task, I'll ask the dude about, well, yeah, about it. Alright. Purchase items. Alright. Last thing I need is more drugs. Okay. Okay, then. You know what we could do, actually? Let's refill our, let's refill our, uh, food while we're here. I believe we're done. One. Items. No, that's, you know, more money than, more money than I made today, but that's pretty typical. Alright, home. God damn you all. I hate you. Hate every single one of you people. Okay, I don't hate Joe. Just, oh, oh, speaking of which, remember, let's hit Joe. Let's hit Joe up, see if he's got another, like, another board. It's open. I'll chit chat with him too. Hey, Joe. Yes? Blank. Could have another piece of wood. Do you have another piece of wood I could take? Let's me see. I don't, don't think I have any right now. Ask in a day or two. Might have some later. Alright, so great, great. Chit chat. Keep you busy with repairs. Eh, I can't complain. It's the only thing I'm really good at. Yes, we'll agree with you on that one. No, long, Walter. I know I'm paraphrasing with some of these, but I'm not gonna repeat the same things over and over again ad nauseam. Tired. Great. Peckish. Great. Alright, so let's. Let's deal with the food issue. Alright, second thing is that let's just hit the bed. Sleep. Okay, fine. Oh, god, finally. Okay, so it is now night on Friday, so what we're going to do is we're going to study. Uh, it's a chemistry. Exams are at six, you know? Let's do it. Alright. Now, let's do it. Oh, good, Kazaya can't bother me now. Oh, no, I clicked past that one too much. Alright, I have a study session with Alison today. Excellent, what time is it? Morning. We could do, alright, what I'm gonna do actually is save the game here, because I'm not sure about the timing on this. Five hours go by, are we gonna be on midday? I don't wanna stiffer, so if it doesn't go well, we'll actually just, meanwhile, exams are seven point two. Um, hmm. Should we start alternating or maybe we should do some of the sacred geometry part? Let's do that. Okay, five point one. Excellent. Where's our theory at? I don't see the theory listed here. Oh, wait, it's here. Sixteen to twenty-five. Excellent. It's afternoon. Let's see, if we messed it up timewise, I will, I'm gonna rewind time, because I didn't wanna miss Alison, okay? Alright, let's go. Got a date. You enter the coffee house. Alison's already there. Yes, awesome sauce. Do you want to order something before we start? The coffee here is quite decent, and I'm buying. You saved me a lot of trouble by finding that card. You don't have to. I won't take no for an answer. Okay, so. Getting, uh, Sophia. In that case, we'll have a coffee. You got it. Let's get started then. Study. We're gonna study, damn it. We're here to study. Let's study. Calamitur is a device used to measure the heat of chemical reactions and heat capacity. We finished the book, but there's still a lot to learn. I will make faster progress on subsequent readings. Examples five, sanity plus one. Let's just talk this time. Talk about Arkham. Do, what do you think of Arkham as a city? It's alright. You can find pretty much anything you need here. If you can't, Boston's not too far away. University, of course, is a big part of the city. Boston, I used to spend a lot of time there. Without it, I don't think we'd fly to Princeton or Saint John's College. What about all the dark rumors and odd witch legends? Don't things imagination run, don't they? I personally find them interesting. You're gonna be a witch, aren't you? In the anthropology sense, of course. Of course. Oh, I like places that have a history, and Arkham has over three hundred years of it. God, you love Europe. That was nice. A light study session. It was good to chat, too. Sure was. Let's do this again sometime. See you around. Okay, so where are we timewise? Evening, Saturday. Excellent, so while we're here. Not sure why we're here. Let's grab some food. Okay, so excellent. We'll have to do some work tomorrow. It's Sunday. It's a good day for that. Oh, god, you got a plank. Good. God. You people have a lumber issue. You live in New England. You have forests everywhere. God damn it, I'm gonna get an axe and do it myself. Now, can we actually stack? Alright, let's talk about this. What's up? Alright, so. Yep. Alright, it might actually detect that we have it right now. Yeah, I'm getting a little verklempt. But, you know, he's not proving to be terribly useful. Also, we're gonna have more money, I think. Alright, cool. So the question is, since it's late evening, we should probably turn on the light off? To make sure we're not. So, you know, it's like freaking Saturday. She's gonna replace it on, um, Monday anyways. Let's do it. Have to make it a habit to have fireplace, have a fire going on the weekend if we're gonna afford it, you know, really live large. Alright, you're hungry, fine. Tasty. I'm full. Alright, so you're not, okay, so we should probably. Since it's night, um, let's just turn in. Oh, no, 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 cancel. Need to get the, that done first. Let's seal this hole. Beat you to death with a hammer next time. Sleep. Alright, Sunday. Let's go get some work done. Nice luck, well, what a cold day it is. Alright, cool. But we have one thing of firewood left and we'll use it as we leave for the night. Okay, so. This is Dobronski. Pay me, woman. Alright, rain gutters. We're chopping. I have cold weather clothing. Okay, let's do the rain gutters. Those are essential. Very well, they're also miserable to do. Okay, so the work is miserable, so it's probably altered our, uh, existence. I mean, our status. Here's your payment, three dollars for a day's work. They're getting kind of a gameplay loop gone on here. Alright, so while it is at seven dollars, it's currently still late afternoon. It's cold, so. University won't be open. We're peckish, rusty, but cold. Hmm. Good. Sit upstairs. Still daylight out, so you don't have to waste our thing. So could do, like we were saying before. Yeah, that's the last batch, but. Okay. Excellent. One hour passes. Okay, what should I start to study? Let's get back to the chemistry. An elemental substance that cannot be broken down. Okay, fine. Oh, there's a reason to call it research, constantly going over the same stuff over and over again. I'm full. Excellent. We're actually rested. It's late evening. Let's do it. Actually, hold on. Let's check the schedule. Okay, so next exam's the twenty-third. If I do an all-nighter doing the malphicarum. Right. What was that all about? We must have changed status to night. Okay, so yeah, let's do it. I'll put my earplugs just in case. Kazaya could be like, I finished the book. I call plus three. What do we got here? Malacar, malus malaphicarium by Heinrich Kramer. He's also a character in Warhammer, by the way, also known as the Hammer of Witches. It's a nineteen twenty, okay, Montague focuses, it's grim and violent, gluck on the occult. I borrowed it. I've read the book. Okay, so we need to return the book and grab Murray is probably next. Also, the fact we're gonna have to wait till tomorrow to do it anyways. Currently tired, so if we take a nap, we've still got the board going. The hell, woman? I didn't ask you to come in here. I had a lousy sleep. Mr. Cleaning was disturbing me. Woman, I don't wanna bother her now. Let's let her clean the room. Couldn't have waited until I left? Are we serial? Oh, gods, you people. You just, no. What do we add anyways? Yeesh, twenty-one dollars. God damn it, we can actually afford having a date, a relationship at this point. Alright, we're just gonna leave because I'm really hating this room. Okay, so. Get our universe. Let's get our, try to do our last minute cramming for the exam, shall we? Nice outfit. I actually kinda like those outfits that time. It's only a few ones I like. Not cute. Alright, first of all, malice. Excuse me. How can I help you? Return book. I like to return this book. Thank you. Let's still get Murray's, because we know where that is right off the bat. We can only be reading one at a time anyways. I know he's just a third one if it really comes down to it. Yeah, you keep studying that, uh, yeah, you keep studying that miniature. These five buildings are hard to navigate around. Gods. Guessing you didn't get here on merit. Alright, let's go check it out. Fighting library action, everyone. Excuse me. Yeah, can I help you? Oh, no, no, you need to do this. Goodbye. Alright, so we need to great, grab Murray's book. Excuse me. Yes, borrow book. I'd like to borrow this book. I've actually read this book, by the way, in real life. Um. It's specious in its, um, claims, but it's a fun read anyways. Alright, fine. Let's rock. I could have. Alright, cool. Awesome. Exams are plus one. Yes, we are going to master it. Master it. Master the organic chemistry. Okay. Okay. I will eat it right here in the road. I'm full. Apparently it was bad. Let's go see if we can replace it. Kazaya just bite me. No, not literally. He's probably into that. See you back at their place. Cool. Alright. Let's go deal with our problems. Ah, gods, I hate all of you. Joe, tell me you got a stick, the wood I can borrow here. Too late to do so. Can't sleep anywhere else, but I'm not cold. I'm very tired, however. No rats. No, we got a rat. Piss off. We have a problem. Because I'm very tired, it's gonna affect studying towards twenty-five percent. I'm just gonna expect the exam, because today's the exam. I can't. I'm gonna check something. I'm gonna save the game just in case. We're gonna try, um, we're gonna try resting for two hours, see if it actually helps. Alright, good rest. Still very tired and I'm cold. Ah, gods, getting slowly colder. Great. Doesn't help, unfortunately. So I guess we gotta bite the bullet. Bastards. No, we can actually do something about that. We can. Coffee. One dollar for coffee and donut. That's a bargain. Yeah, I like it. Much better. I don't feel that tired anymore. Yes, yes, we can do this. Hit it. I got my coffee and I'm ready to roar. Alright. Yeah, just in case. I will save scum if necessary. You could go back and check all of my documents. The theory delivers a couple of overthrowes, combustion. Oh, god. Hate the question. Question. Logstone theory. That one I know. Excellent. What elements have been discovered? Uh, oxygen and. Hate the question. Was it oxygen and hydrogen or is it nitrogen? No, it's actually some hydrogen, wasn't it? Quite sure about this. Gaze to the science of measurement, that matter I remember. Four groups of elements, metals and earth. That's magical. This one, not as difficult. I'm quite sure about this. I was tired before, but the coffee has helped me focus. This was almost too easy. We did it, everyone. We did it. Now I'm gonna go pass out. No, gods. No, let's go. Ah, feel like I've had a bender and it was just exam. Ah, feel like I've had a bender and it was just exam. You better have a freaking. Board for me, old man. Yeah, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna totally, oh, no, we need food too, I forgot. Right? Tomato soup. God, tomato soup. You know what? What we're gonna do now, we're peckish. We're going to eat. Right here in the alley. We're gonna buy another one. That's right. We're gaming the system, everyone. Ah, ha, ha, I will master all of this in time. All right, so I gotta go talk to my neighbors about staying out of my room and my landlady, apparently. People are terrible. Okay, so I'm not cold. On the other hand, let's get this damned board in place. You know what? Screw it. We can get another one from Joe over as well. Three boards. I don't have to go scrounging. All right, I will open up with chit-chatting. Just because I'm kind. Even though he only says the whole thing. Do you have any? Okay, cool. You know, I'm not paying him, so I'm not actually going to be upset about him not biting. I mean. Transactions are transactions. Social and otherwise. Rat poison. Okay, so we're looking at evening, very tired and cold, so since we just, she just restocked. Let's get this to here. Warm up the room. And we will start her up. Now, with all of this in place, we are going to drop our sleeping pills. They anyways, sleeping pills. Ah, excellent. Onto Walter. Now. Cause, oh, fuck you cosmic forces. I hate you all. Does the drugs do that? What the hell? I don't know, man, but it's a better room than we had before. What is this place? I must be dreaming again. Oh, why is Joe's crate here? I'm not gonna get into this junk. Shard. I might have a use for this shard. Books. I don't have time to read the books right now. I couldn't concentrate anyways. I don't wanna let my guard down in this place. Canned tomato soup. Cool. Apparently they're collecting stuff. Hmm. Can we move it? All right, so, yeah, oh, I gotta hang on one second, guys. Okay, so I think what we're gonna do here is we are going to, um. Pause for the episode here, leave it a bit of a cliffhanger about what we're gonna be doing, cause you know, like I said, sudden genre shift here. Apparently we've gone through time to go talk to the elder ones, beings. Yeah, it's definitely, definitely a thing he's not gonna be able to do with. Anyways, so we'll see what happens to poor Walter, but we did get a couple of cans of tomato soup out of it, so I think we're probably cool. Anyways, I'll see you next time. This is, ha, 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 blah, 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 blah. This is Fantastic Worlds. Saying farewell from Lovecraft Country. Hope you enjoy your time here back at the Miskatonic University and environs. And we'll be, like I said, breaking into an alien facility next time, which, you know, bit of a genre shift, but. Hey, this is what happens when you're, when you, uh, attend Miskatonic University. Actually, this is one of the better cases. We'll see you next time. Bye. I'd like to thank my acolyte level supporters whose contributions help this channel grow and hastens the inevitable digital apocalypse and rise of the dark lords of content and data.